To order this mayor commission work session. Today is Thursday, June twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty four, and the time is ten A M. So we will dive right into the agenda. First item is capital improvement program update. Mister Valbrecht.
Good morning, Mayor Commissioners, Kevin Valbrecht, Director of Engineering. I just want to kick this off. The capital improvement plan update for this year and next year. As you've noticed, outside, we've been very, very busy this year. And we are going to be continuing to be busy for the near future. And, you know, we feel like we've made some great accomplishments this year. And we're very proud of all the stuff that we've done. And we're very, very thankful for all of your support in helping us to accomplish these things that we've done. So I'm going to turn it over to Vladimir, who's our C I P manager, who's the main person who's responsible for this whole program. So Vladimir, now.
Thank you. Good morning, mayors and commissioners. Once again, my name is Vladimir Geno. I'm the capital improvement plan manager. And today, we're going to present some of the things that we accomplished this year. And also looking at next year, what we plan on accomplishing. So to start, this is what we'll talk about. We'll talk about the way we prioritize projects, certain of the outreach that we've done, how we communicate, how we get projects done. And certain project status as well. We'll look at the budget funding program for the C I P for two thousand and twenty four, as well as two thousand and twenty five. And we'll also get an overview of the C I P website that we have put in place this year. And then next, we'll go into fiscal year two thousand and twenty five. So to start, we talk about the way we prioritize project. That was a question that was asked. And we looked at putting a C I P committee together. That committee has been established. And those are the members of the C I P committee. We have one city administrator, the engineering services director, the C I P manager. We have two members from public utilities, one from Parks and Recreation, the grant strategist, and one budget division staff. That makes up the member of the C I P committee. And when the committee gets together, the way we look at prioritizing projects is that we have about eight aspects that we look at. We look at life, health, and safety. We look at legal and regulatory compliance, level of external funds. We also look at minimum level of service, essential improvement, just to name a few on part of that list. On what we look to when projects come that we prioritize them. And we're using that to prioritize the new projects that are coming on. The program already has many projects into it. And as we look into getting those projects done, this criteria will help us to see better analyze those projects that we currently have on board and also the new ones that are coming on. So the C I P program, those are some of the different funding into the C I P program, gas tax, capital acquisition, some funds from public utilities, the C R A, the sales tax funding. And we have grants which makes a part of our funding. And when we look at it, three hundred million dollars. And all those three hundred million dollars have already been dedicated to the project that we already have in the C I P program. And those are some of the grants that we have obtained from different entities. And some of them are the F D O T, local agency program, what we call the LAB program. And we have a transportation alternative also from the F D O T. We have F D P grant for land and water, the FINE grant, resilient Florida program. And one that we recently acquired is the RAISE grant, the rebuilding American infrastructure with sustainable and equity grant. So these are some of the list of the grants that we have that makes up the forty one million dollars that was in the previous slide. Also, we work with our communication department to let people know how we are doing with our C I P program, the projects that we are completing, and how we are getting them done. And so to do just that, we have launched, we had a C I P website with the help of our I T department. We were able to launch a new website, one that's more user friendly, I would say. And then also, we have, whenever we have a project, whichever neighborhood that is impacted, we do a notice of construction. And those are distributed to the residents to let them know that this project is coming on. And if they have any question, they can speak directly to the project manager. There is, the contact information is listed, the contractor, so they have those information at hand. And also, we have also issued press releases when those projects are about to start to let the community know what's going on. We also done some groundbreaking ceremony and also some ribbon cutting ceremony to show what we have accomplished. And those are some of the things that we've done. And one of them was Genspock, when that was, the groundbreaking was being done, that was published to the website as a way for the community to know. So that takes care of the outreach, and also the last slide talking about the C I P website. So this website, the link to access it is listed here. And that allows any resident, it's a public website, any resident to go to that link to be able to access that website. And they have a feature on that website where one can just type in their address. And within that address, there will be a dot, and then they will see what project is going on in that area. So next, the, what we have accomplished this year. So this year, we have, we're projecting to complete thirty five projects. Some of them are already completed, some of them are still projected to be completed before the end of the fiscal year. And the total value of those thirty five projects totaled about thirty point one million dollars. And some of the status by the graph shows that a lot of them are in construction. There are some of them that are just, about thirty percent are completed, just eleven percent of them are in procurement. And the makeup of the value of the project for each district is shown in the graph. Shows that there is quite least some good distribution within the program. And also, there are some other district that may, you know, we can see that the number maybe, you know, could be low. But really, that's what the C I P program is comprised of. So as we go through, those are the list of the projects that we planning to complete and that will be completed for this fiscal year. So we mentioned that we're thirty five of them, and I'll just go over briefly a few of them. We're looking to get, for example, Palm Beach Lakes Service Ward, that's one of them that was completed. Coleman Park is scheduled to be completed by, before September. We have George Petty Playground, Clematis Street South Passage Way, which is a five hundred block in Clematis on downtown. We have Roosevelt Estate. There were quite a few projects that were being done in that area that have been completed. Next, we have the Clear Lake Trail. That one is completed, and you'll see some of those pictures. The Title Valve, Phase Two B at Bloomfield Drive, that one was completed. Douglas Avenue Lighting, Lift Station, Flamenco Park Neighborhood Improvement, and some F D O T project that we work in conjunction with F D O T to get completed. And continue on that list, we have Fives Park, Shops at the Press, Washington Road Project that we're looking to complete before the end of this fiscal year, South Flagler Paving and Bike Lanes, and Elsie Monument, just to name a few. And also, Tamara and Avenue Streetscape between Banian and Seventh Street, looking to be completed. So that.
Before you move on, is it possible to break out in this list those projects which are actually completed? And then separately list those which are still in process or be completed by the end of this fiscal year?
Yes, I can.
Okay, I mean, because it's a nice long list, but I don't know which ones we're still working on.
Okay.
Get that to our seven commissioners, please?
Yes, we can, I can do that, Mayor.
Thank you.
Yes.
Question from President Ward.
Should we ask, is it appropriate to ask in this session what, if some of them we want more explanation on? Or should we do that afterwards? Like, I'm curious what the Flamenco Park Neighborhood Improvements was and the Washington Road project was.
Yeah.
Hey, Sean, Kenny.
The Flamenco Park Neighborhood Improvements was one of the sales tax program projects. We basically repaved and replaced the curvy and upgraded the street on both Lake Avenue and Flamenco Drive. Was something that we hundreds of, over the past year, and it was just recently, months ago. Washington Road Improvements was a totally drainage project, a very large six million dollar project that had a number of issues and problems with it that we're finally bringing home and shooting that up in the next few months. So that is a tremendous accomplishment. We'll see a picture of that later on this slide.
Okay, and just sorry, follow up question on that?
Yes.
Just for that Elsie Monument? Just is replacement repair, is that being done by the neighborhood afterwards?
That was partially done through the city. We did a Indian Island improvements and we landscaped it. This is a Delaware road just west of South Olive, between Dixie and Olive. And then the Elsie's contributed about sixteen thousand dollars towards the monument.
Okay.
Any other questions before we continue? Okay, proceed, thank you.
And some of the pictures showing some of the accomplishment, some of the covert that we have started replacing. This one at thirty twenty nine Charlo Drive, that one shows, that one has been, that particular one has been completed before and after picture. The Clear Lake Trail has been completed. Fogelman Park, that one's completed. The Fives Park Concession and Bathroom, that has been completed. Facebook Playground are also completed. And the Skate Park is still in progress, close to be completed. Blum Park, completed. Washington Road that we just mentioned, that one is in progress. Coleman Park Gymnasium and Playground, that one is, playground is close to be completed, gymnasium soon to be thereafter. The Elsie Monument, that was completed. Douglas Avenue Lighting, also completed. The Grassy Water Nature Center Roof Replacement, that also has been completed. So this would wrap up the fiscal year two thousand and twenty four highlights. And if I can move into fiscal year two thousand and twenty five, or we can entertain some questions.
Any, President Ward?
So just, I know that there's a committee. So how are these, how were these prioritized and how will projects be prioritized going forward?
So the committee, the committee was established this fiscal year to help with the priority. So those are projects that were already ongoing in the C I P program. So we look for, we look to get them completed because they were already have, they were already budgeted, project managers assigned to them. And a lot of them were, you know, whether already designed or already in construction. So basically, we continue carrying them forward. So as we move into forward into fiscal years, there are projects that in the program for next year, that's already, part of it already is in construction. So those ones, we have to move forward with them. And as we look forward into coming projects, the committee gets together and we meet regularly. And when we look at those criteria that I mentioned earlier, those eight points, and then based on that, we evaluate each project and give them a score. And then from there, they make the priority list, and then we are able to move forward with them.
Mayor Commissioners, Ramon De Fana, Assistant City Administrator, just want to expand upon that a little bit because some of the previous projects were, for example, projects that came under the Parks Bond, which was approved by the voters in the city commission. The Public Works Bond, which was also part of an approval process, as was the city sales tax, the penny sales tax dollars. Those were also projects that were identified and approved by this body. And then we've also had projects that have come online through the C R A funding or through other grants that we've received from E P dot. So that, a lot of the prioritization depends on the funding sources that have come in the past. And so that was a lot of the prioritization. And we also had the payment index, which is being updated as we speak. So those are some of the rationales for the previous projects. And as Vladimir said, moving forward, this committee will look at projects on a case by case basis. We have an extensive list of unfunded projects still, and then determine the priorities based on the criteria that's been established.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes, I just would like to add a footnote that we also have to take into consideration some of the different sources of funding have timelines by which the dollars have to be spent. So we want to make certain that we get the money out the door so that we don't risk losing it.
Can we perhaps, how often does the committee meet? All right, can we perhaps either every month or every quarter, or maybe even every six months, whatever it's, at some point distribute to me and the commissioners the priority list? So they could see it in relatively real time after your meetings?
Yes, we can.
Sure.
Okay, Commissioner Fox?
Thank you so much. I just want to clarify something about the priority list. Like, for example, the Douglas Avenue Lighting, I know that's something that the neighborhoods really wanted and that I was working with Chris and the C R A last year to get that done. So that was a priority that we worked on in the C R A. So was it also something voted on by your committee? Or I guess, how did the C R A projects factor into the committee decisions?
So as we talk about funding is important. So whenever, you know, if a project has funding, and by the time I came onboard, that project was already slated. And when we had the funding for it and the availability, so that was why the project moved forward.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, thank you, very fine report. Kevin, you want to add anything? You good?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you, Vladimir, appreciate it.
Mayor, we still have fiscal year twenty five to come through.
Next year to talk about it.
That was fiscal year twenty four.
I'm sorry, you know, been a long week.
Yeah, so for fiscal year twenty five, we are projecting to complete about thirty projects. And those totaled about thirty two point three million dollars. And also, we provided some of the makeup of those projects, various status as it stands right now. And also, the distribution overall within the city on how these projects are distributed. So those are the list of the projects that we're looking forward to get completed next fiscal year. So I mentioned there were about thirty of them, so I'll go through a few of them. One of them is, we have a joint agreement between Palm Beach, Palm Beach County for a utility relocation on Palm Beach Lakes and Congress Avenue, Smart Irrigation Phase Four, the Brian Chapelle Fishing Pier Replacement. We have some lift station upgrades that will be completed. Thirty Second and Thirty Third Street Waterman Improvement. We look at North Flagler Drive Drainage Improvement, Pinewood Avenue Sewer Replacement, Osprey Park, Village Boulevard Parking Lot, the Pine Terrace Improvement, Okichobee Boulevard and Parker Avenue Waterman Replacement, York Bridge Improvement by the E C R, Pineapple Park Stormwater Improvement, Title Valve, Phase Two C for the Elsie area, and also Howard Park Tennis Center Innovation. And also, to be completed is the LAB project that's currently ongoing in the Roosevelt Estate Seventh Street Sidewalk. And also, South Olive Tennis Squat. So those are some of the projects that we look forward to get completed for the next fiscal year.
Yeah, questions from Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you. I know that some of these projects, you know, have been a part of communications and conversations for many years, and six plus years from when I've been on the commission. To follow up on the questions that President Ward was asking, can you also talk about, you know, the process of, you know, first being alerted to these concerns and these issues and the process that it takes to get them on this list?
Well, that's, that's a varying type of response. It really depends on what the situation is. There's a number of locations where, you know, we may be considering doing some sort of a streetscape project. You know, if C R A has some interest in doing something. Or we want to also look at, hey, are the utilities in good shape? Do we need to address those before we go and do the surface improvements? In some cases, there may be a bigger problem with utilities that we need to go deal with. And then what do we do with the surface after we get done with the utility problem? Roosevelt Estates is a good example of that, where we've done a lot of work in Roosevelt Estates to provide and improve the whole drainage system in that neighborhood. We've utilized tremendous resources from the city and other funding. We've got the grant funding going towards that as well, from the RAISE grant, to make tremendous improvements to that neighborhood based on the needs that are there, that the neighborhood communicated to us. And so, a lot of it involves, what is the community asking for sometimes? What are the infrastructure conditions that we need to address? What are the overall type of surface improvements, streetscapes, et cetera, that we may want to look at? Lift stations, for one thing, you know, those have been around for a number of years. They do need to be rehabilitated so that they can continue to operate. So there's a number of factors involved. These projects that are all on this list have been on the C I P program for sometimes a number of years. And we're finally getting around to getting to do those based on getting to the point where we have the resources in house to be able to get the designs done, get them out to bid, and actually do them. And sometimes, we need to take care of prerequisite type of activities, like taking care of the utility problems. And then that kind of starts things back at the beginning because you got to go through the design process and everything like that. So that's why some of these things have taken a lot longer than maybe would have been expected. But we are moving forward with them, and we intend to move forward with all the ones that are currently on our C I P program list. And hopefully, get those done, you know, in a short period of time. But that's basically how that whole thing works. If that answered the question, I hope.
Yes, Commissioner.
Yes, it did, thank you so much. And, you know, I just, I was pleased to see the slides that you had on community outreach because I think that that's something that we combat regularly is trust of our city government and that we, you know, have had these conversations about some of these many years ago and that they're happening. And so I appreciate the constant communication that we have with either the residents or the neighborhood associations, however, we're getting that information out or through us so that we can help communicate it, to let them know, hey, this is happening, and to communicate that process that you just described. Thank you.
Is it safe to say that we have made significant progress within the past few years in getting, in knocking out a number of these C I P items?
I think that is safe to say that. I think we've made tremendous progress just in the last two years alone. And, you know, it's been, some of these things have been there for a while, but we've really stepped up and been able to get to that point in the process where they can actually move forward. And so you can see, we've got sixty projects in last, this year and next year that we're planning to have completed. And I think that's a pretty tremendous accomplishment. And we're going to continue at that pace or better as best we can.
And Mayor, if I could add a footnote, Kevin, and I might not want to cut you off here. Probably, Kevin probably wouldn't mention this, but before, two years ago, we did not have a capital improvement manager. Kevin S. D., Director of the Department, was wearing both hats and really was carrying too heavy, you know, of a workload trying to manage, you know, three hundred million dollar capital improvement program and running a department. So I want to recognize that this was one of the new positions that the board approved in the last two years. And it has made a tremendous difference. You know, I think we are well on our way to being able to, now that we have funding and all of the other factors in place, we have the staff resources to keep the program moving forward.
Yeah, no, thank you, Ms. Johnson. Now, with one of the points I was going to make, also Assistant Director, which didn't exist before.
Oh, how could I forget that?
But I don't want to lose, I don't want folks to lose their memories on, we basically had a very difficult two years with COVID. Not only price escalations, but labor shortages, not only on our side, but the contractor's side. So the amount of work that's been done in the last two years has been tremendous. But we did basically almost lose two years, or at least things slowed down tremendously for two years.
There's been absolutely no lack of effort, let me tell you, okay?
Well, I think there is a good story to be told here. And I would ask that you work with Communications to put together a kind of a summary of the progress that we've made certainly in the last two years. Because I think, to your point, Commissioner Lambert, about trust, a lot of times distrust is based upon a lack of information. And this isn't a story that will be carried by the Palm Beach Post anytime soon. So I think it's good for us to toot our own horn about the significant progress that we've been making and let our residents know that we are making progress. Yes, there have been some projects on there for a number of years, but we're solely but surely willing that list down. President Ward, I know you got it.
Yeah, thank you. And this is, it's really nice to see the list and what's coming down the pipeline. But I do echo the mayor's comments, it'd be nice throughout the year, quarterly, to just, okay, this is where we're at. Because we do get a lot of requests on all these different projects, and it's nice to know where you all are at. Just real quick, Osprey Park Improvements, I know we finished the playground and everything, so what's left for fiscal year twenty five?
Okay, I'm sorry, can you repeat the question for me?
Leah already is, she's going to take it up, I know it.
Good morning, Leah Rock, Director of Parks and Recreation. So we still have some security cameras that need to go into the park that's been requested by the community. And we've got some, just some dog park improvements, some minor stuff, but the majority of the work has been done. We just know that it's going to roll over into two thousand and twenty five to get the fine minutia done.
Thank you.
One thing that I would like to note is the C I P website. I know I mentioned it, but also, I have it on the board where, real time, what we did with the C I P website, we, instead of putting a dot, we decided to outline whatever area that we'll be working on. For example, if I take, for example, Roosevelt Estate that we currently working on. So anybody can go here on the website with the address, type in the address, and the map will automatically pull up closer to the address, and they will be able to see what is going on in that area. So that also let the public know what we are doing, what projects are online. And when the projects are completed, we keep it online for the, until, because the website is updated three times, three times a year. So when a project is completed, it waits until the next, sorry, the next update. So the public are aware of really what's going on, and they can get real time information as to whatever project is going on. And also, you know, the description of the project, what we are doing, the project manager, so they can get in touch with wherever that personnel is to answer any question that they may have.
And that's great, and that should be part of the communication that goes out when we talk about what we have accomplished. Certainly highlight the fact that we have the website. There she is, okay, taking good notes, thank you. That the website is available for the public to check themselves, thank you. And Vladimir, I do want to commend you for serving in this position. Clearly, as has been stated by Ms. Johnson and Mr. Fana, your being in this position has contributed significantly to the progress that we're making. So thank you for all that you're doing.
Thank you very much, thank you for the confidence.
Commissioner Lambert?
I want to continue that.
I want to continue that recognition of your work because also this CIP prioritization criteria, I think that this is really important because I know that it's been very difficult sometimes, as sometimes the loudest voices aren't necessarily in line with this prioritization list. And to be able to utilize this to make sure that we are looking fairly across the city and making sure that all of our city residents and stakeholders are getting the attention that they need is extremely important. So thank you for bringing this to the process.
Thank you. And we will continue to make, continue making progress and refining that process as we go along.
You could continue with the presentation. I know you're not done yet.
No, not yet.
Yeah, I didn't make that mistake twice, so, okay.
So just to finalize the presentation, let me get, so we talked about the project that will be completed next year. And also, we have to also acknowledge some of the challenges that we, that we face and will continue to face. And some of the challenges that we see is that labor prices and material cost increases still continue to go up. And we also get those from the contractors. And sometimes we budget something, and then we beat it out. And we see those real values come when the time comes. So we expect that to continue. The labor market shortages, procurement timeframe, identifying much grant funding for some of those projects, those continue to be a challenge, because there are some projects that we would like to do. Maybe there's not enough funding, and we try to apply for a grant, maybe there is no grant available. So we, identifying that with our grant strategies, being part of the committee, will help us to really streamline that even better. And some of the opportunity that we look for is that when we have, there is a grant that we apply for it, we do our best to obtain that grant. We'll continue to develop the master plan, Stormwater Master Plan, the pavement index, condition index that's coming up, using those to really help us, you know, prioritize projects and get projects done. And also, the need to continue coordinating with our, with the utility department, and even with other agencies like FDOT, the county, they have projects that really work in synergy with us, that using those avenues to help us mitigate some of the challenges and opportunities. Maybe those are money that we would have to spend, but because they're having a project, maybe we can, with that synergy, it helps us to balance things out.
Yeah, I'd like to also add, you know, on the point about, you know, developing a master plan to help create future projects. You know, to follow up, the Engineering Department has added some valuable resources to our group to be able to, you know, help our program move forward faster, so it's not always just on myself. And I really appreciated that. But with Vladimir involved in it, we also have Jessica Keller, who's our Mobility and Transportation Manager. And she's responsible for getting a new bicycle master plan update. That's going to be coming up here very soon, as well as the Mobility Plan for downtown. And so there's legislation that just took place talking about mobility, funding and fees, as well as being able to implement the bicycle master plan more comprehensively based on the new update. And so those types of activities and the people who are responsible for that that we've brought on board are going to make a tremendous improvement to the program as well and add to the benefit to the community as far as getting things completed that are necessary to be done. So that's a very good thing.
Yes. And the last one is that we see really the value to continue, of continued collaboration with the Communication Department to help us advertise, let the public know what we are doing. So we're looking in the next few years to continue that collaboration process. And this would end the presentation if, oh, sorry, I'm getting ahead of myself.
I was about to point that out to you. Not done?
So there are projects on the CIP list that did not make the list that we talked about that will be completed. And it's not that those projects are forgotten. They are part of the CIP program, but their completion time happens later in the fiscal years. So just to name a few, of those that we expect to be completed between twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-eight, some of those projects are like Broadway, Gens Park, the community center and the tennis park. And also, we have some grant projects like Thirty-Six Street Improvement, Forty-Nine Street Traffic Calming, the Seawall Innovation Pilot Program, the Carver Neighborhood Improvement, which is one of the grants, the Twenty-Six Street and Flagler Drive Stormwater Rehab. And also, Kerry Park is one of them, the fire training facility. There is some part of it that we look to move forward with. And then there is the Beeline Highway, a collaboration between us and FDOT, looking for that to be done within the next several fiscal years. And with that, this will conclude our CIP presentation.
Before you move off that last slide, you have dollar amounts here. So are these, this is the projected budget, and are these monies set aside already? Or we got to find the money, this is an anticipated budget, we got to find the money? It says funded, so I'm assuming that the monies are there.
Yes, the value listed there is the value of those projects that are fully funded, that are, I'm going to say fully funded, that are funded.
All right, so the money is allocated?
Yes, correct.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Fox and Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you so much for the presentation. My question is about the penny sales tax. It's set to expire, I think, at the end of next year. So do we, I guess, already anticipate what money we'll be receiving and what the end will look like? And I guess, you know, that's a big chunk of money when I look at fifty-three million that we're using. And then you touched upon the mobility impact fees that were assigned this week. Is there any more explanation you can share about, I guess, what kind of fees we could look for from that, from that new bill?
Let me just touch on the mobility fee, because that was, that was just signed by the governor this week. So we are looking at the options that we have. There's going to need to be a lot of discussions and collaborations with the county. So we'll come back with you, to you, I'm sorry, with that information once we have gathered the requisite background information that we need.
And as far as the sales tax program goes, that was a ten-year program, which stopped collecting the sales tax and distributing that to the municipalities after twenty twenty-seven. But the projects are still being done, so it's not like we have to finish all the projects. But we will stop collecting any money from the sales tax program after twenty twenty-seven. So that money is currently allocated and committed towards the number of projects already.
Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you. I know that, what I want to talk about is trees and shade and trash cans. And I realize that those do not typically fall under engineering, that that's Public Works and our Sustainability Department, who just gave us presentation on both of those items. But I was just curious, and I was looking back for the committee, you know, is there Public Works folks? Or maybe that's, you know, one of the administrators who oversees, that kind of brings that into conversation? Just making sure that when we're doing these upgrades to our parks, how we're considering the additional shade that might be needed there, might be warranted that we're budgeting for that, whether that's in this budget or other budgets. And then also, we're consistently hearing, just unfortunately, about more and more litter and about quality of life, you know, because people are throwing their trash on the ground. And I know we have the Keep West Palm Beach Beautiful in place, and just making sure that we're working hand in hand with those programs.
Well, I can tell you, I think the departments here at the city, I think we work very, very closely together. We work with Leah and Parks and Rec, with Leon and Public Works, with the Fire Department, with the Police Department, with Housing Community Development. We are, we are a very collaborative group, which is one of the best things about working here at the city is the fact that we work together so well, and we understand each other, we know what each other's needs are, that is going to benefit the community overall. And we are in discussions and conversations about things like that on a continual basis. And so there should be no loss of any prioritizations or needs between departments in this whole capital program because it's been very consistently communicated, you know, throughout my entire tenure here. And it will continue to be so because we have such a great working relationship with each other. So it's, it's really, really a great thing.
Was that Leah Williams, you want to speak to that?
Yes, I'm Leah Rodriguez, Assistant City Administrator. And just to support what Kevin is saying, not only do we have that collaboration, but we have it ingrained as part of our operating procedures. We have a standing meeting between Public Works and Engineering that occurs on a regular basis, so that... Yes, it's actually today is one of them. So that we're not just meeting when there's a problem, or meeting when, oh, I have to tell you something. We're proactively meeting constantly to make sure that we have a running list of items where we can, Public Works and Engineering need collaboration, or where they have issues that we can help them with, or we have concerns or issues that they can help with.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Any other questions? Well, thank you very much for this. Okay, well.
One question. Since we hired the new grant position, are there a lot of grants that we weren't able to apply for before because we didn't have the time and staffing to go for them? I'm just curious if there's, you know, a new kind of bucket of money that we can be looking at now that we have a person who can spend dedicated time going after those?
Well, I think we have always had that on our radar to be able to do that. I think with Dante Drummer's coming on board to help us identify potential funding opportunities that we may go for. And then the Engineering Department was also able to bring on a grant, a project administrator to help us with all of the compliance documentation that we need to do for the grants. But we recognize there are certain projects that we want to go after grant money for because they're appropriate to do so. And we will continue to do that, and we'll probably be able to do that even more readily and more successfully now that we do have these two new positions that are on board here in the city, so.
And I can add that the fact that it's part of the CIP committee, understanding the needs will also help us in looking for those funding, for sure.
By the way, is Dante here?
Yes, he is.
Stand up, Dante. I don't know if everyone has met you.
Hey, everybody.
Very pleased to have Dante as part of the team. And one of the things that he has been doing, which I did emphasize when I heard him, is to make sure he made his way around the big users of grants, Engineering, Public Works, Fire, Police, so he can understand and be educated on what their priorities were. And then his, the other part of his task is to go out and find the buckets of money to match those. But he's brought a lot more to the position than I can even imagine in terms of the technology and smart sheets and stuff I don't understand, but he's young, so he has communicated that. So it's a much more efficient process, but it also goes back to what was alluded to earlier about the collaboration among the departments. We're trying to make sure silos are broken, so the weak, as a city government, can operate more efficiently. And Dante has been a key part of breaking those silos so that the left hand knows what the right hand is doing. So formally welcome to the team, Dante.
Mayor, if I could just add a footnote here in terms of maybe an impact that having the grant strategists on board has made that is not highlighted. So because of the staffing shortages that we have experienced, we had staff that were doubling and tripling up on duties. So you had perhaps maybe the Engineering Director, who was doing capital improvement, assisting with the grants, and then other professional level staff members who were also tripling up and were working extraordinary hours. When we did the windshield analysis of our retention challenges, one of the major comments that we got out the door for why employees were leaving for either less money and maybe smaller municipalities was that the workload and the impact on their quality of life. So that's an intrinsic value that we have been able to accomplish by adding, you know, five positions in Engineering and having the grant strategists now to take the lead on applying for some of these grants so that we don't have staff who have done a yeoman's job and really without complaining. But it was a real issue here within the organization. So I want to make certain that that's not lost in this discussion.
Well, let's not underestimate the impact of the market adjustment to the salaries, too. That also helped with retention.
No question about it. No question about it.
It's a combination of those, and I said that pointedly because that was an initiative that you headed, Ms. Johnson. So that contributed to our ability to attract and retain key employees. And, but as she mentioned, expanding the staffing so that people did not have to feel overworked has also helped. Okay, anything else?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay, item two. Fire rescue call volume, staffing update. Chief Matty, thank you.
Chief, do you want any of your other team members to sit at the table, or you're solo?
Sure, Chief Montante, please.
Come up to the table, Chief.
Do we have a name tag on him?
No, we don't.
Take down Diana's, I don't want people to think that's Chief Matty. It was a joke. No one got it?
Him really got it.
We got it.
Thank you. City Attorney, oh my God. It's a tough crowd. Okay.
Morning, Mayor. Yes, sir. Good morning, Mayor, City Commissioners, Ms. Johnson and Ms. Rothenberg and staff. We're going to do a little bit of Fire Department updates this morning. I have with me Assistant Chief Guy Montante, who is not Diana Matty, who is our Assistant Chief...
That's what you said.
Well, it's all about the delivery, is our Assistant Chief of Administration. So the agenda for this morning, we're going to go over call volume, an update on community paramedic, and a little bit about our current recruitment efforts. So a little bit about the Fire Department. You can see on the map, we have nine stations situated throughout the city. There are three hundred and six personnel, and we do have one logistics facility over at I-95 in Belvedere area. Our call volume, you can see on this graph, has been ticking upwards over the past several years. Our year-to-date is just under sixteen thousand, so we're on target for about thirty-two thousand calls this year, if the trend continues. And at the top of this, these bars, you can see a little green segment on there where I highlighted the number of overdoses, because that does come up in a lot of conversations. So the number slightly increased, twenty-two over twenty-one, but then is ticking back down so far year-to-date. So we're, just based on a half a year's analysis, we should be around two thirty to two fifty for the year, which is good compared to our numbers several years ago in twenty eighteen and twenty seventeen, when we were about eight hundred. So that is positive. Overall, call numbers are going to continue to go up as population increases, so that's to be expected. An update on community paramedic is, you know, as we have given updates before, it's providing specialized health services to high users of the nine-one-one system. So repeat callers, people that are calling for chronic disease. So we did get some grant funds, we're getting some vehicles ordered out of that grant funding that was awarded earlier this year. And we've got a hundred and seventy-five patient referrals just since January. So they're doing a great job of making contacts with these folks. And so the way the referrals work is, let's say the fire truck or the rescue truck goes out, and they make contact with a patient who they think maybe is not necessarily a candidate for that transport, that emergency service of transport to the hospital. They can fill out part of their medical report, fill out a form that says this is a referral, and then the community paramedics follow up with them. And it could be anything from, they're out of their insulin, or their blood pressure medications, things that are prompting them to go to the emergency room for basic services. So they're doing a great job in getting those high users kind of out of, out of the emergency system. And then we just started initiation, it was also part of that grant funds, we started initiation of using a new patient software, which is different from the nine-one-one call software. This is more like the doctor's office charting, where when we go back to them continuously, it's like a running log versus one call at a time for those patients. What have they been doing? They participated in our city's health fair. They assisted the clinic with the HRA blood draws, so they were able to get more volume during that event, doing CPR training. Just this past weekend, they did a heart screening, they assisted with a heart screening event at South Olive Park for teens, which was kind of prompted by that incident in the south end where we had a young man going to cardiac arrest after being hit with a baseball. They're doing AED training, stop the bleed, and fall prevention with the county. So that's, those are all good things that they're doing. And then moving into recruitment. We have 11 people that are on our recruitment team that are participating in all of our hiring events. We did get some overtime added to the budget. So we went from a group of five or six and increased it to 11. And they're all across the board of all ranks and tenure on the job. So they have all level of experience. We've got one young man who's very savvy with all of this and this. And, you know, he does a great job and.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that word again, please?
This and this. I don't know what it is, some of the things that they.
Is that a technical term?
It's much like how you feel with Dante. It's things I don't understand. So, but we're moving, we're moving quickly into modern technology. They've got some great flyers for us, you know, when we're putting stuff on social media. So when we're looking at our current vacancies, we're at a very low number of vacancies overall for the fire department, which is fantastic. We've got five firefighter vacancies. It puts us, puts us at 1.63% of our total FTEs. However, it's important to note that two of those are, were new positions that were, one was a grant funded for the community paramedic and one was a logistics chief that was funded earlier in the mid-year. So really, and then the other one is a retirement. So really only two of those, which is less than 1%, it's 0.63%, are people that left to go elsewhere. So that's, that's wonderful for us. So we really have small numbers to fill for this upcoming recruitment, which opens on Monday. And so the part of that process is going to be a written test, a physical ability test, and they come in for interviews. And then we do the rest of it, the medical, physical, and the job offer. And then they go into a recruit academy, which is scheduled to start November 4th. So they'll come on board and do, you know, 10 or 12 weeks of training, depending on how their performance is. And then they go on a one-year probation.
Chief, before you move on, Mayor, I just want to footnote that right now, our overall vacancy rate is around 15%. So when you look at what it is within the department, they're doing very well. And so we'll continue to work on the heart to fill positions throughout the organization because normally we have a vacancy rate, or turnover rate, rather, of about 10%. So we're trending a little higher at about 15% right now.
Can you recall the last time the fire department had such a low vacancy rate?
I would say it was around 2019 because at the very beginning of 2020, we did a class of four. So, you know, we typically will wait a little while till we get six or 10. But at the beginning of 2020, we, you know, we were heading into COVID and we needed, we needed people. So we, we did a class of four early. So it's been some time. So this is another one of the flyers that they, they did. So we advertise on the city's website, our own website. The A-list is the state fire marshal's email blast that goes out statewide. Anybody can sign up for it. It goes to all the fire training academies. And then it's important to note that they're doing a recruitment tour, not only the recruitment tour, but also job fairs. But they go around to different fire academies and training academies, EMT academies around the state. They take a certain week and they do a loop to the north. And then a couple of weeks later, they do a loop to the south. And they go meet with these groups to try to really do some good recruitment. So, you know, a testament should go to them. And as you can see the QR code, so we can, the applicant can go right to that link just by aiming their phone at that QR code. So another thing that we do that's above and beyond what a lot of fire departments do for our recruitment so we don't miss good applicants is we do a job application workshop. And we bring them out to the EOC. They go over how to use iRecruitment and, and kind of walk them through all the requirements to make sure we're not missing out on anybody who may not be up to speed on how to use that, that program. So, and that's been quite effective. They do, they show a video and hiring team is all there and they can meet, meet the firefighters that they potentially be working with. And further, we do have a couple of youth programs that we've been involved with. So we've been a, kind of a standing partner with Palm Beach Lakes High School's Fire Academy. And we've got, we do, when they have a field day, we bring the fire truck out. The firefighters go and, and work with the, with the kids. It's part of a four-year-long program that, that has, Wellington's been doing for quite some time, but we're fortunate to have one right here in our city with Palm Beach Lakes. And then just a few months ago, we started Junior Alerts Camp with the Florence de George Boys and Girls Club up on Pinewood. And it was a six-week-long program with middle school students who we see those as the kind of bridging the gap between that, that age group where there's so much that can happen right in that time period where we can sway them to a job in public safety where they can then be feeders for that Palm Beach Lakes program. So we're trying to join those two programs together. So I'll open it to any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. On that last point, had we had the Junior Alerts Camp before?
No, sir. That was just, this year we started that.
That's a great idea. Whose idea was that?
It was, no, sir. I will not take credit for it. It was, we many years ago had a camp called Firestorm, but it was decades, decade and a half ago. And it just never could get it back off the ground after the recession because of financial reasons. And I was working with one of our firefighters, Bianca Clements, or Bianca Ellis, excuse me. She does a lot of work with the kids up at that camp and up at that club. And so we were talking and got with their administration up there and kind of pitched the idea. And they loved it and they want us back for more. And they have a robust summer full of things that they need those kids to do. So we're going to do something again here shortly, so.
No, I, I think that's excellent. And Diane, make another note, maybe we could do a little piece, video or something on that program. I think it's a great, great, great idea.
And they, they had so much enthusiasm. It was, it was wonderful to see. And then we did a little, a little graduation for them at the end and, you know, gave them a little certificate and they were all super pleased to have been a part of that, so.
I mean, because you're right, if you could get those kids at that age interested and going into public safety now gives them some direction, some purpose.
And they all live in the area that would feed lakes. So that's, you know, kind of the, the dream there.
Fantastic. Thank you. Another question for you, Chief. Do you have any ideas as to why there has been looks like a pretty significant reduction in the overdose deaths?
I know that law enforcement has been doing a great job of, of some different operations that tie to that. But I would also say that there's more widespread, widespread distribution of Narcan. It's available over the counter. A lot of people have it in the home. So we do, our medics do see sort of spent Narcan sometimes when they go to these places, you know. But with, with fentanyl specifically, it takes so much more Narcan to revive those folks that sometimes it doesn't work and the medics are needed. But sometimes if, you know, they're handling it, sometimes people overdose multiple times before it rises to the level of a 911 call.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, Commissioners? Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you. I think we're always excited to hear how the community paramedic program is going. I know that that was an idea that blossomed into what we have today and that, what is that saying? An ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. And so I'm always happy to hear that. I don't know if this falls under the fire department, but was recently looking at the defibrillators that we may have in public spaces or in our parks. What is our policy on that? I mean, I know you were talking about heart training and things like that, so it just got me thinking about that.
We have AEDs, Automatic External Defibrillators, at a, at a number of locations citywide. I want to say it's in the 50s distributed out. You know, there's quite a few in City Hall. We have Stop the Bleed kits along with, with them and Narcan in some of the places, too. So I know the libraries had some experiences with the need for Narcan. So we definitely have distributed out every available sort of a safety station where we can around the city. The AED itself is, it talks to you. It's, it's, it's a smart device. You put it on the patient and it will tell you shock advised or, you know, no shock advised. So it's got pictures. You just kind of do the matching game and, you know, match the pads to what the pictures show and, and turn it on. And it, it talks you through, it talks, you know, a civilian through what they would need to do.
Did we just at one point distribute these 50-plus AEDs? Or do we constantly monitor and look at where they're located? Or, you know, I don't know, are they in every park?
I would have to ask Ms. Rockwell if they're in every single park. But to my knowledge, they're, they're widely distributed from everywhere, from ECR to all over the parks. And it's, it's, if you want to.
Okay, I was about to say, I know we just looked into, I think Commissioner Ward may have brought this up to me directly. And so go right ahead.
Leah Rockwell, Director of Parks and Recreation. So in all of our community centers and all of our other, like the skate park, the aquatic center, all of our, all of our parks that have facilities all have AEDs in them. And as a part of our agreement with our sports providers, they are required also to have an AED onsite with them during their programs. We do not currently have AEDs in all of our parks. The county is looking into that as well. There are some pros and cons to it. So we're kind of in communication with the county to see kind of where, where they're going with it and then whether or not it's something that would behoove us. I know Chief Matty and I have had a discussion about this. We talked about it a little bit. But it would be a standalone system that would be put in a park that, you know, there's some, many of our parks do not have staff there. So it would just be there and how would it be used by the public? Would it be misused by the public? That kind of stuff. So we're looking into all of those risk management issues that might go with that as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions, President Ward?
Just want to say thank you, Chief Matty, for everything you're doing and I appreciate the information. When it comes to recruitment, for my edification, when I'm talking with people, other than the fact that it's wonderful West Palm Beach, what tools are you all using that differentiate us from other fire station, fire cities trying to pull in recruitment? What, what differentiates us in the big picture?
Other than being the West Palm Beach Fire Department, other than that. One of the things is the, the job application workshop. And where we highlight the special operations that we have in the city. So we have top-of-the-line equipment. We have new vehicles. You know, we've been very aggressive, the city has, with all of the buy-in from these, from these you folks here on the, on the dais. But with your support and with Ms. Johnson's phenomenal mathematical skills, we have been able to buy top-of-the-line fire trucks. We are one of the only fire departments in the state of Florida that has a tiller, which is the ladder truck that has the driver in the back. So we're a destination department and we tout that. We have a dive team and we have jet skis and a boat and a lot of things that, a technical rescue team that a lot of other departments don't have. So, you know, we'd like to highlight those special programs. So when they come to these job application workshops and when we're out there talking to them, we have challenge coins, you know, the QR codes. It leads them right to the website. So we make it as seamless as possible for them to go right to the application and get everything that they need right there. Yes.
Commissioner Fox?
Thank you so much for the presentation. I have two questions about the community paramedic program. I don't know, is there any way to have data about, maybe from the hospitals, about the number of people, the reductions that they're seeing, I guess, in the ER? Because based on this program or how are you working with them, I guess, in terms of this program versus, you know, taking people directly to the ER and how you can, I guess, the benefits for the hospitals that we have this program? And just in terms of in the future, if there's any way for them to help with the budgets for that?
Sure. That's been a challenge for us is to get those numbers because it's, it's, they, they track, hospitals track the number of patients that come in, the number that, you know, stay for longer than the ER visit, you know. So it's, it's kind of difficult to kind of get them to, to give us that information or to analyze it. But what we can, what we can show internally is that the cost savings just from one call is around $2,600 from not taking someone, you know, per call. So with 175 calls, I'm not going to do that math in my head, but, you know, that pays for at least one of the positions right there in itself, you know. So we're seeing that and as the program, so now there's four people. There's, there's two lieutenants and two firefighters. So now we're able to capture more people and do more work and do more prevention. So I think we're going to see those numbers grow. And, you know, hospitals are, are making, they're open to listening to us, but we haven't made any, any real strides towards getting that specific information analyzed.
Thank you so much. And this question might be before Ms. Johnson, but I know that the fire department is so proactive and looking for grants and that there are several positions over the few years that I've been here that have been paid for with grants. And you just mentioned that this is one of them. And I guess just as a reminder, to me, I'm wondering, like, how long does that grant last? And then what are we doing as a city, I guess, to make sure that we are looking for funding in the future for these positions? Thanks.
I can say over the past about 10 years, we've brought on over 75 firefighters with grant funding. So we're very successful with that continuation of, you know, one of the classes we did in 2021 was 28 firefighters that we got on a grant, which is, which is tremendous. Two of these firefighters that are currently in community paramedic are on part of the SAFER grant. So they're, they're existing grant. And then one was part of the FDEO, CDBG, CV2 grant funds. So we have a couple of years with that. So that's, that's what I can speak to.
Yeah. In general, where we've had the firefighters that were brought on board through the SAFER grant, we have three years that they then come into the general fund. And I tend to mix up the numbers. So we have, is it 12 firefighters that are coming into the FY25 budget? There is a number that will come into the general fund budget. So we have the plan for that. And I'll correct, correct the number if my memory on that is incorrect.
One of the things FEMA has done in, in different than they used to do years ago when they did the SAFER grant, they paid 100% for two years. And then the, the city had to absorb that or terminate the employee. So FEMA changed the way they, they do that. So it's, it's more of a phased-out approach that gives, that kind of builds in for the city, you know, to take that on, that financial over the three-year period. So they go from 100% to 65% to 35%. So it kind of tears it out.
Follow-up. Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you. While we're talking about recruitment and the number of firefighters that we have on staff, I went back to your slide on call volume. And I know you have the last three years here. I'm curious if this increase is typical, like from fiscal year '21 to fiscal year '23, it was 1,000, give or take, in each of the medical and fire-related calls. Is that typical over two years to see that, that kind of growth?
Yes. We've, we've had a steady increase. If you go back just, you know, percent over time, if you go back to just around 2014, we're up about 40%. You know, it just, it's incremental. But with, you know, the great job the city's been doing to, to boost, you know, really the, the growth in the city, you're going to see that. And, you know, that, and, and we have, the COVID years were kind of, you know, that skews everybody's numbers for everything. But, you know, we've done, we've done, we opened Fire Station 9 back in 2016 because of the growth in that Roebuck Road and Haverhill corridor because we were starting to see more calls happen in that area. And it was taking, Fire Station 6 would have been first due in there or Palm Beach County was covering it. So we put that in a strip mall and that's, that's one of the stations. That's the one that's in the trailer out on Roebuck. So we've been running out of that for several years now. We're, we're off of the strip mall and into the trailer. So, but as, as those increases happen, we would need to add units here or there just to keep pace with the growth in the city.
And I know that you mentioned, and we have a great, the tactical unit that you mentioned and the different specialties that we have. But is there a, I'm sure that there is. I'm just curious. What is the ratio of call volume to number of employees that we have in the department or?
I would just divide the number of calls by 306. Yeah, I mean, there is, really the, it's more on call volume per unit, not necessarily per person, as it were. But when you start to get up to the 3,000 and 4,000 for a unit, that's a busy unit. And so we look at, we look at first due unit availability. That's our primary driver. So that's where we got Station 8 as a, as a priority. Because when that truck was not in that zone, it was a tremendously increasing time if that next unit was, let's say Palm Beach County was our backup to when Engine 8 was not there. If that backup unit was not there and we were waiting on Palm Beach Gardens or another. or another county station to cover that call, we were, the response times could be delayed. So when we staffed Station 7, we went from, I'm going to say, 23% of the time where that next unit, that, that first due unit wasn't available, when that call hit in Station 7's zone, and that truck was already on a call, and we were waiting on either county or another West Palm unit to cover it, 23% of the time, we were waiting on somebody else to take that. When we put Engine 7 and Rescue 7 both in service full-time and fully staffed that station, we went down to 4%, which is, you know, remarkable. So that's just some historical percentages.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Related question, Chief, you may not have the data readily available, but I'd like to get that distributed. How have response times varied from year to year?
We are pretty consistent with our response times, around six and a half, six, six minutes and 20 to six minutes and 30 seconds, right in that, in that range.
So not with saying the fact we've had more calls, we've still been able to maintain a pretty consistent?
Pretty consistent.
And that's low, six minutes is?
It's kind of on par with, with South Florida.
Okay, alright.
You know, if we were, if, for example, Station 1, which is at Fifth and Dixie, gets a, a call here, it's going to be pretty quick, but if we're having to go inside a gated community out west, it's going to take a little bit longer. If, you know, there's a, a lot of variables, but just on average, we're right about six and a half.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
President Ward?
You mentioned a boat and jet skis. Is that a permanent unit, a water unit, or is it just available if needed?
It's not staffed. Like, we don't have a, a marine, I mean, if we want to, I would love to, but we don't have a, a dedicated staff to that, so it's usually the crew from Fire Station 1. They main, they maintain it, they train on it, so they, the boat is in the water at, at one of the docks, uh, on the waterfront, so they can get down there, launch the boat, it's on a lift, so they lower it, and they can go out and do a water rescue, and then we have the jet skis. Um, one is usually in the water, the other one's usually, we keep at Station 1 to deploy, because we could use that on the lake, you know, or in a, um, something out west, so.
Given the trend, sorry, Mayor, given the trend that we're seeing when it comes to more boating, bigger boats, more docks, is that something you foresee as, as needed, an issue if there's a fire on the water or near one of these tall buildings?
Sure, I think that's a, for the, for the marine community that we have, I think down the line, uh, I think we've been, we've been talking about it for a number of years. We go through phases where there's quite a few boat fires, and then, you know, we have a valley. But, but there is a need, I think, in general, for that kind of service in the north end of the county here, uh, the central part and northern part, because, um, you know, the Coast Guard, that's not a service that they take care of, and we've, you know, unfortunately had numerous yachts in the past 10 years or so that have, um, you know, with, with some of those, though, they get so advanced so quickly, that, that you end up protecting the other property around it, because you're talking about fiberglass, fuel, and adhesives, and that's a, that's a very rapidly moving dangerous fire. So in the grand scheme of things, I think with the waterfront community here expanding, and the, the marinas and things like that, that we're, we're, we're trying to, you know, market the city as this, as this thriving boating community, I think that's something we need to look out for the future for sure.
Thank you.
Commissioner Fox?
Thank you. I also wanted to ask, you know, when we talk about the density and the, the growth in the city, so much of it is growing up in a way that it didn't used to. And so are there resources that we should be looking at for the fire department now that, you know, more and more of these taller buildings are coming online? That it's, I would imagine it's a different challenge for your job, and are there different resources, you know, when we start budgeting things that we need to be looking at and talking about?
I think encouraging fitness is a, is a major, plays a major role in that. We currently, under a grant, have a fitness program that's been very well-received, uh, very, uh, it, it, it drives teamwork, and we've had a lot of people that are, you know, working out a lot more, you know, including myself, that maybe weren't as, as proactive before. But the higher we go, the more fit the firefighters have to be, because there's, they're carrying everything up those stairs. So they need to do a lot of training, and I think stressing the fitness and the, and the teamwork is key. Would I say that there's any one piece of equipment? Not necessarily, but I think it, it comes down to resources and that reflex time. Because if we have a fire in the downtown, I need a dozen people, 18 floors up right now, waiting on them to maybe come in from the western communities to support that first firefighting effort, that first push. You know, it, it, every, every mile they are away, and every floor they are from where that fire is, is just time. And fire grows rapidly every minute, so it doubles in size every minute, so we need to get, you know, attack it. I think our fire prevention code is, is good. I think supporting, um, you know, when we, when we build buildings, fireproof buildings with sprinklers and all of those things, that, that's, that's what's protecting those residents. You know, if we get to the point where a fire sprinkler system has not kept a fire in check, let's say it was a lithium ion battery fire, and we've got something very violent going on, you know, like you're seeing in, in New York and some of the other major cities where they're recharging these kind of off-market batteries and they're catching fire. We've, uh, we've started experimenting recently with buying these little beads that are, um, that contain those lithium batteries in these little containers that kind of hold it like an ammunition can to, and so it can do its thing inside that can, and it's protected. We also purchased a couple of fire blankets that are specifically for those types of batteries to cover it and more, and more smother it, because you may have seen on, on some of these news reports where it takes 100,000 or 200,000 gallons of water to put something out. You know, and so we're trying to be proactive in, in those areas too, but that comes with, uh, strong support for the fire prevention code.
Any other questions? Alright, great report, Chief, thank you so much.
Thank you, Chief. Okay, we got to move on to the last item, Mayor.
Yes, item three, Fire Assessment Fund, Fiscal Year '25 Proposed Budget.
Uh, yes, and while Ms. Soufrance is getting ready, I just want to remind the Commissioners, Mayor, that we had a presentation from the Inspector General back on November 6th of 2023 about the Fire Assessment Fee Fund, and pretty much got a clean bill of health in terms of the use of the money, uh, uh, being appropriately aligned with the ordinance that spells out the various activities, and you're going to see a continuation of those activities that are proposed for funding in fiscal year '25. So, Mrs. Soufrance?
Good morning, Mayor Commissioners, Bridgette Soufrance, Chief Financial Officer. I am here this morning to discuss our fiscal year 2025 proposed budget for the Fire Assessment Fee Fund. By way of history, in 2008, the city adopted Ordinance 4141-08, creating the Fire Assessment Fee. The Fire Assessment Fee is a reoccurring special assessment that is brought forward annually. The Fire Assessment Fee was created to assist in funding a portion of the fire services cost. The general fund and general property taxes cover the remainder of the fire services costs and all emergency medical services, or EMS, as those are not eligible under the Fire Assessment Fee. The Fire Assessment Fee covers approximately 15% of our city fire service costs. Ordinance number 4141-08 describes the fire services costs and the eligible expenditures. Some of those eligible expenditures include physical buildings and facility improvements or repairs, land acquisition, materials, machinery, and equipment, fuel, parts and supplies, IT-related needs, and labor costs specifically related to fire services. Special assessments by definition are charges against real property for costs incurred by the government to provide benefits to that specific property. Unlike your property taxes, which can be used for a general purpose, special assessments provide a dedicated funding option for essential services and capital needs, such as fire services or stormwater. Our Fire Assessment Fee provides comprehensive fire services by funding a portion of our fire suppression, fire prevention, and other fire costs. It also provides the benefit of protecting value and integrity of improvements to those real properties within the city of West Palm Beach. It provides a reduced cost of fire insurance for our residents and enhances the market perception and property values. The proposed Fire Assessment Fee for fiscal year 2025 will remain unchanged and at the same rates since fiscal year 2020. As you can see in the chart, we have five different property use categories. The main one that ends up being discussed is our residential, which will remain at $100 per dwelling unit. The four other categories remain the same with their square foot pricing. Moving into the budget numbers, here we show the fiscal year 2024 adopted but revenue budget compared to the fiscal year 2025 proposed budget. With the Fire Assessment Fee not changing, we again are budgeting for an estimated $8 million in revenue for the Fire Assessment Fee Fund. In fiscal year 2024 budget, there was a transfer into the Fire Assessment Fee Fund from the Debt Service Fund of $243,000. That was related to unused Debt Service funds that was discovered during a reconciliation. We moved those funds back to the Fire Assessment Fee, and there are no unused funds for fiscal year 2025. Looking at the Fire Assessment Fee expenditures displayed here, comparing fiscal year 2024 adopted budget to fiscal year '25 proposed budget. Our personnel services include a 5% step pay, health insurance increases, and workers' comp increases. Materials and services increased overall 27.9%, with the largest increases being purchases for new fire bunker gear, increased utility costs, and increases in our contractual services. Internal service charges for IT and fleets are remaining flat. Transfers out increased by 53%. These transfers out include transfers to Debt Service for any debt payments. Also includes transfers for equipment maintenance and one-time funding capital items that were submitted via budget issue, and we'll discuss that in detail on the next slide. The final category is Reserve for Capital Outlay, which is $219,000 proposed for FY25, down from 2024's $2 million. Each year, based on our budgetary operating and capital needs, we anticipate any funding that we can put in that reserve for future outlay, future capital outlay needs. The fire department has identified increased capital needs in the FY25 proposed budget, which is why you see that increase in the line item above for transfers out directly related to capital. Thus, that then reduced the amount that we can place aside in this current fiscal year for reserves. Presently, the Fire Assessment Fee Fund reserves are being held with the intention of planning for funding a permanent Fire Station 9 and renovations at Fire Station 1. As you can see detailed on this slide, the proposed fiscal year 2025 Fire Assessment Fee Fund budget includes nine firefighters, four equipment maintenance staff, and assistant fire chief, as well as materials and services covering traveling and training for annual certifications, fire equipment maintenance, uniforms and bunker gear that are on an annual replacement plan cycle. Detailing our transfers out, we have the Debt Service Transfer for the 2020 fire lease and multiple one-time capital projects, including Station 1 overhead plumbing, Fire Stations 3, 6, and 7 alarm updating, Fire Department logistics storage, Station 1 generator cover, Station 5 TRT canopy, Station 2 gate motors, Station 3 camera system, Station 1 tower painting, and a pumper truck and cargo van from the Vehicle Replacement Plan. Additionally, we are reserving $219,000 for future capital outlay needs.
Before you go off of that budget, the Assistant Fire Chief, is that a new position, or?
It is not a new position. It has been in that, um...
It's been in the fund for several fiscal years now.
Correct, it was just on the same bullet line, and we chose, we chose to break it out this year.
Right, okay. Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you. Why, I, I, I'm sure this is just an accounting reason, but we call them transfer out, transfers out versus something like materials and services, where, I'm just curious if you can explain that?
Sure, it is in fact an accounting reason, so as the Fire Assessment Fee Fund is its own special revenue fund, um, I have to transfer out of that fund into a different fund, the Capital Fund or the Debt Service Fund. So we don't have the ability to call out specifically, you know, including it under materials and services or capital, because ultimately, they're paid out of different funds. So the Debt Service Fund pays that lease, the Capital Fund pays for all of those one-time capital items. So we are shifting money from, uh, Fire Assessment Fee Fund to the Capital Fund. New this year, every project and every dollar that leaves the Fire Assessment Fee Fund is being, um, given a project number, so that it also can be tracked specifically as Fire Assessment Fee dollars.
Thank you. And did you say in the beginning, that this Fire Assessment Fee Fund is a certain percentage of the full fire department budget?
So it's an estimated 15% of fire service specific costs, excluding EMS.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you, sir. Wrapping up with your key dates, we will bring forward on July 18th the Preliminary Fire Assessment Rate Resolution and Chronic Nuisance Assessments. August 19th will be the final Fire Assessment Rate Resolution and Chronic Nuisance Assessments, looking for approval. September 9th, we begin with the first public hearing for the tentative fiscal year 2025 budget and mileage rate, and look for the final public hearing on September 25th and budget adoption. This is the slowest slide, I apologize. Any questions?
Thank you. President Ward?
I don't know who can answer this, but what are we doing with Fire Station 1? Or just redoing the building, or what's the plan?
I was trying to remember my comments on Fire Station 1. Come on up, Chief.
Fire Station 1 was built in 1979 and, and occupied in 1980, so, um, it's got a lot of old pipes. The roof needs to be replaced, the doors are the original doors and windows, so a lot of that, um, kind of a refit of the, the major structures, the doorways are kind of rusting out, so, um, the bay doors themselves have kind of been replaced over the years, just as they've gotten damaged, but the entryway doors, the frames need to be replaced, the, the tiles that are on the tower, you know, the grout is over 40 years old, so, uh, those need to be scraped off and, and painted, or whatever, whatever the, the specific technique that they're going to do. But the roof has leaks, you know, it's a number of things, but the, the pipes in the truck bay that are kind of exposed pipes to the elements, they rust and break, and so we, we just have a lot of, of facelift needed.
Follow-up, Mayor?
Yes.
Just thinking, as we, um, as we were with the Bing and Garage trying to come up with multi-use and providing funding for it, are, are we talking at all about a potential project that's a big piece of land in the downtown, and people are trying to build higher buildings in the downtown? Have we thought about it all, trying to see if we could combine it with a project where we do have the fire station on the ground level and something built above it to provide more funding?
If I could, part of the, the issue with that is that we still need a surface lot because of the training requirements that the firefighters need to do. So if we ate up the entire footprint with just a building with not having a surface lot, we can't pull the fire trucks out and pull hose, you know, at the, at the station. That's why you see a lot of the stations have a larger parking lot, so that it kind of serves two, two purposes. That's specifically, um, that particular parcel, uh, we would have potentially the, the opportunity to rebuild, if we wanted to rebuild, in the, where the parking lot is, and then demolish the building in place. There's a number of, of different things that, that could be theoretically done, but one of the things that a lot of fire departments in the, that are in the downtown areas, they, they have to keep that space, because otherwise, our fire trucks are going to have to leave the zone to go train, and we, we can't train safely on the street in downtown. So in the evening times, you drive by there about 4:00, 5:00 o'clock, 6:00 o'clock, those trucks are out there training. So whatever we do, we still need to consider the fact that we need that surface area to continue providing the service that we do.
Another follow-up, you're mentioning training, is that normal for training onsite? Is, or is it because we don't have a separate training facility for our fire department?
You would want both, ideally, because the training facility would be where we could do multi-company You would want both, ideally, because the training facility would be where we could do multi-company drills. The training that happens at the station is, we've got a, a recruit, a entry-level firefighter who needs to do performance objectives, ladders, um, pulling hose, do, spraying water, doing different activities in, in, um, that are in addition to a multi-company drill. Where with a training facility, we would need, we would like to see classroom space, we would like to see a high-rise training tower where rope rescue training could occur, where we could bring fire trucks out to do pumping evolutions, where we could, you know, instead of pumping water and then having it go back onto the ground, we could have a pond, a retention pond, that we pump out of, so we're not, you know, wasting water. So there's a, there's, it's kind of two parts, where we have a lot of individual training that needs to happen, but also we do still need a fire training facility.
Commissioner Fox?
Thank you so much. I know that we're sort of just in the beginning of budget season and these budget meetings that we have scheduled. Um, I'm wondering, in your timeline of key dates, I don't know if there's a date set for when we might be hearing about the rest of the fire department budget. I know that there's contract negotiations going on, and it's hard for me to know what questions to ask about this seeing, you know, what's in the fire assessment without knowing what will be in the rest of the fire department budget. So just curious if we have, um, an idea of when we might be looking at that?
Okay, in terms of the Fire Assessment Fund, the proposed, uh, budget that was just presented is what is, uh, eligible in terms of being used with those dollars. So the rest of the fire department's budget would not be eligible for use for that money, so you can kind of separate those two. In terms of the proposed, uh, FY twenty-five general fund budget, where you will see the rest of the fire department, it's going to be scheduled for the July twenty-ninth work session. So the board will get that full presentation, which will include the fire department among all of the other general fund operations.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you for that presentation.
Mayor, I would like to, just, uh, for the record, uh, for the number of firefighters that are coming into the general fund, it's actually sixteen that are coming into FY twenty-five for about one point seven million dollars.
Okay, thank you. Alright, those are all the, uh, agenda items. I don't have any, uh, thing under Mayor's matters.
Thank you, Staff.
Uh, Commissioners, you all have anything for, any of you have anything for the good of the order? Okay, um, Staff, you have anything for the good of the order?
No, sir.
Alright, well, this, uh, that's it. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you all very much for your time.